Here, this manager.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. We have one work session item tonight, and that is to discuss the substantial amendment to our consolidated action plan, which is related to our entitlement funding from HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. With us tonight is Shannon Meadows, our Community Development Director, as well as Chelsea Jones, our Housing Rehabilitation Coordinator.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Commissioners. I'm excited tonight to not be on my own and to have Chelsea with me. Jackie is on a very well-deserved vacation this week. She has literally spent the entire COVID period in front of her computer managing compliance and regulations. So we're missing Jackie, but I'm glad that I have one of my right-hand people with us tonight. We thought that since she spent all last week looking at budget, she might as well look at a few more. But no, in all seriousness, tonight, we do want to share with you something that is quite different than what you typically see from the entitlement funds that we bring forth. A substantial amendment to the consolidated plan is basically saying to the federal government, hey, everything we said a few months ago is out the door. We changed our mind. We've talked to the public about the minds that we've changed, and we need you right now to agree with us. In a traditional time, that is not a very easy process. Jackie and I were thinking back as to whether or not we could ever remember an actual substantial amendment coming forth. And we can't. We've talked about it as staff, but the process itself is just so much that typically what you do is you wait until the next year. But 2020 is not a typical year. And because of the funding that the city has received from Housing and Urban Development as a part of the CARES Act itself, HUD has recognized, and Jackie and Chelsea have done all of the hard work necessary to bring forth a substantial amendment to the consolidated plan. So that plan is the money that governs community development block grant funds, home funds, and emergency solutions grant funds, otherwise called ESG. You kind of remember those throughout the year. And without much ado each year, typically around March or so, we submit an action plan. And every five years, we submit a consolidated plan. It goes forward. We do our work. Nothing really changes too much, an activity here or there. But this year, things have changed completely. So the great thing is, I can't see those slides, so I'm gonna just keep talking. But the one thing about this funding and about both the amendment and the plan itself is no matter what, every penny that we talk about tonight must always be tied to low and moderate income individuals or low and moderate income areas within the city. No other way about it, unless we're working with the elderly population or specifically the homeless population. So in a year like 2020, with a global pandemic, with Congress rushing necessary funding through for assistance to state, local, federal government, private sector, et cetera, regulations have really collided with reality. And there's a lot of things that are happening on our streets, a lot of things that are happening that are absolutely necessary to deal with, a lot of things that you think, well, yeah, use that extra money for. But this funding particularly doesn't work that way. We talk a lot about the CARES dollars and sometimes the FEMA dollars. Indeed, we do have additional CDBG and ESG dollars that have come through CARES, but they come with the exact same regulations that we've always had to comply with, global pandemic or not. And so that has added a layer of complexity to designing the substantial amendment, as well as being able to deliver the services that these funds are supposed to provide. So, like I said, we submitted the plan actually in March. And nine days later, after the plan was submitted, we were notified of additional funds. So literally, since April, Jackie and Chelsea have been working on changing the plan they had just created. And you can remember a little bit, kind of, of what we thought reality would be in April as compared to what reality is today. And so you get a sense for how many times they've gone back since April and changed the plan again. Well, tonight's the last night that we can even consider any changes because it needs to be submitted tomorrow. And so as a part of the public information process, we want to make sure that we review what our recommendations are. Also highlight that this recommended budget amendment has been out for public comment, and that public comment period closed on Friday. We did not receive any comments or any feedback that caused us to change our recommendations to you tonight. The other thing that I do have on this slide, while Chelsea and Jackie were going back and forth as COVID realities changed, right? They were also going back and forth in changing and recommending changes to the plan without any regulations tied to the money. We were notified of the money. We didn't get any rules. We didn't get any statute. We could only work on presumptions and assumptions. And it wasn't until July, after we were notified in April, that we had a clear path as to what we could do with the funds, even though we knew what we should do with the dollars. So I'm just gonna get to it. I'm gonna show you some graphs, and Chelsea's here because as you have specific questions, she's going to be able to answer those specific dollars or those specific program details. But what I'm going to show you is a series of graphs that's going to first give you, by category, amounts that we had planned on spending, the amounts that you had approved for us to spend in CDBG, ESG, and home dollars. And then on each slide, you'll see a second bar come up, and that's going to show you the change in recommended dollar amount. And you'll very clearly start to see a theme, as you can imagine. So when we started, when we submitted the plan, we were looking at a $2.5 million CDBG program. And you can kind of see the distribution there. We were very proud in 2020 to see the largest amount of dollars spent in the Engage Neighborhood. This would have been the first year that we specifically designed, targeted, and invested in one area to build momentum and make change. And then March 13th came, and now we're to November 24th. So at this point, we are recommending a program budget of $4.5 million. And you can see how many of the blue lines have shrunk within those categories, including the Engage Neighborhood, as well as Housing Rehab. And some categories that weren't budgeted at all now are the highest amounts, including homelessness assistance. So this is the CDBG program. And when I get through these slides, we'll go to a summary so you can see those dollars and ask specifics if you like. And then we have the Home program. When we started, we were looking at a $713,000 budget. Not too much actually changed in Home, except the focus on specific need for additional housing. Home funds are often used for those tax credit projects, right? And so we had anticipated, moving forward with making a recommendation to you, that if the Community Garden Phase Two project were funded by the state of Ohio, that we would participate with home funds and provide local MAC. But then our homeless crisis started, and we knew it wasn't going to end. We already have Community Garden Phase Two, and IHN came to us and said, you know, there's an opportunity for us to buy one of the very old developments that the Public Housing Authority owns. We'd like to acquire that and completely redevelop it. And that redevelopment would be used for permanent supportive housing. Well, if we know anything, on November 24th, 2020, we know that we need additional affordable housing and particularly permanent supportive housing. So we are recommending a $1.2 million budget, moving forward with home dollars. In order to make that happen, we are going to have to use multiple years of home dollars. We don't want to get in the weeds too much tonight. Chelsea sure can if you need to. But in Home, we're typically running on a three-year allocation cycle. So you don't have to really worry that we've brought in almost $6 million more, or $600,000 more into the budget from reserves. What we're doing is we're running on $2019, $2020, and $2021. But we still have to reflect it in our amendment. And that increase essentially is in two areas. Well, the increase is in one area, which is recommending home fund participation as a local MAC to the permanent supportive tax credit development, as well as the senior tax credit development. So that would be Woodford Place for the permanent supportive and Community Garden Phase Two for the senior. The other big change that you see is in Rent and Utility Assistance. We moved a lot of money into CDBG for Rent and Utility Assistance rather than keeping those funds and programs in Home. And then this one's really easy to talk about. This is Emergency Solutions Grants. It's all 100% homeless services. You can see that we started off, well, actually, you can't see. When we started off at the beginning of 2020, we were expecting about $170,000 for Emergency Solutions Grants. One of the very first amounts that we were told that came to us prior to submitting the plan originally was that first tranche of federal dollars to assist with COVID. And so we were notified early on that we would receive a little over $500,000 to help with homelessness as an anticipated result of the economic effects of COVID. Little did we know that $500,000 could be spent in less than five months. So the original budget does reflect the entitlement allocation and first tranche of COVID dollars. The second bar, which actually, we're nearing $2 million, I think. Right, I can't see it because of the screen. Okay, $1.2 million, I'm sorry, in specific Emergency Solutions Grants alone. So that $1.2 is the additional federal money plus the $170 from entitlement. So the bottom line is, you can really get a sense, when you take all of our programs together, you get a sense of where financially the funding is being applied from the federal government, but also our recommendation as we distribute those funds and run the programs necessary to support our partners in where the community need is right now, right? And that substantial growth is in homeless services. We still are running some traditional programs, right? We still run code enforcement. We still run demolition. We still have housing programs and housing rehab programs, just not quite as extensive as we had planned. We still did an activity in the Engage Neighborhood. It just so happened that our Service Department and our Engineering Division are so awesome and so cooperative that we had planned thousands of dollars, and it turned out to be $500 to do the Center Street mural project because of all of the services and work they were able to provide. We still invested in public improvement. We were able to assist with some of the downtown streetscaping during this year, as well as participate in the majority of the funding needs necessary to repave Euclid, which is now my absolute favorite street to drive on in Springfield. So quite proud of that because that is also a part of the Engage Neighborhood. But many other programs had to be set to the side. Some because they physically could not be carried out in a COVID-safe way, and others because we had to make hard choices in order to address the community need. And so if you look at an overall breakdown distribution of the entitlement dollars, in addition to the entitlement dollars that have been provided to us since the CARES Act was passed, you get an idea of the overall investment. Homeless services being the biggest part there, and then housing programs, public improvement, and some administrative costs. The rest of the programs fall, you know, within the 5% and less than 1% range. Yes, sir.
Question. What are the time limits? Since these are federal dollars, are there different time limits on some of the differing grants? I know, for instance, the CARES Act, some of that expires at the end of December. So I was wondering if there are different expiration dates for that funding or not? Could you explain that to us?
Yeah, so our normal entitlement programs run on a five-year. We have to have suspended in five years. I'm trying to remember. You asked me too fast on the TV. Yeah, 2022, so about two years, essentially. And that seems to run for a lot of the different costs of your tax.
Okay, so we're not as constrained with these dollars as we are with some of our other CARES dollars, as I under.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's good news for us.
Commissioner, you make a very valid point that we've found is very important to remind everyone who halfway listens. A lot of the work that community development, and particularly development programs and housing programs manage, that's gonna be around a long time after our masks come off and our vaccines go in our arms. The buildup of the effect of homelessness, housing insecurity, the overwhelming need for affordable housing, these are things that we're gonna be talking about for years. And so Congress at least had the foresight to recognize that on these particular funds that are distributed directly through HUD, that there was gonna be more time needed. So that is one of the biggest things that we need to communicate as it relates to this substantial amendment. These particular funds are significantly different than the rest of the CARES dollars that we've talked about. Significant in how we can spend them, and significantly different in the time that we have.
Thank you.
So let me just be absolutely sure. You're asking the Commission to approve a substantial amendment.
Correct.
And with the approval, this will be submitted to HUD tomorrow? And when will we know that this has been approved by HUD?
Go ahead. So we always hope for the best with HUD. Depending on what their schedules, it can take anywhere from maybe three, four weeks to two, three months. They've been telling us they're working on expediting for this very reason, COVID needs. But HUD's kind of a difficult one to gauge on. I say HUD's like working with the railroad. They do it when they want to.
Thank you.
But, you know, the agency does recognize the urgency. Because, see, here's the thing. Part of this money can't be spent until HUD signs off on it. So that third tranche of Emergency Solution Grant dollars, we can't actually encumber those dollars until HUD signs off on this. So there's a real urgency for us. But the fact is, every single entitlement community throughout the country is having this discussion tonight and hitting the send button tomorrow. So we are always very reserved as to the expectation of number one, when the sign-off's gonna come, and number two, if and when the cash is gonna be deposited. Now, the good thing is, we're not as worried about the cash this time. It came. But indeed, tonight, you do have emergency action before you for a request to approve the substantial amendment. And then everything that follows after that comes forward as regular contracts like normal.
Thank you.
It would seem to me that the other issue may well be that it appears that the federal government is in the midst of a transition from one presidential administration to another. Now, I don't know down within the ranks of HUD if this will have an impact or not, but it certainly isn't gonna expedite the process.
Or it might, to be honest. We just don't know. We're rarely looking for contracts to be signed in December, right? We're usually looking for those in the spring. This really is in the depths of the bureaucracy. So typically, when we get really nervous about federal workings, it's surrounding either the omnibus bill or a shutdown. Those times can significantly affect the work of entitlement communities like ours. The presidential transition and the administrative transition shouldn't have too much to do with that because this is, it is a very mechanized process. It should be a function of somebody sitting there and just saying, checkbox, checkbox, checkbox approved. And getting through those thousands of communities like that.
I hope you are right.
Well, I do too. And so does IHN.
I have another question for you. On this, in the meantime, if there are citizens that are in need of rental assistance or emergency shelter grants, what do they do and how do they?
So right now, our funding is tied to NHT. Yeah, so they have just closed down their application period about a week, week and a half ago. So they have been, and we are recommending individuals in need of rent or utility assistance to call OIC and apply for their assistance. I believe the counties is also shut down as well. So OIC is the one right now. Sure, yeah, I'll get that phone number.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chelsea's gonna look up that phone number and see what it. What has happened within the community when it comes to Rent and Utility Assistance, right? The city will be investing $450,000 of this budget in Rent and Utility Assistance when it's all said and done. The county has invested over $100,000. And then OIC received from this last tranche of funds released from the State CARES Act, $750,000. So within about a three-and-a-half-month period, partners in cooperation with the state and federal government will have provided over $1.2 million in Rent and Utility Assistance. That sounds like something to celebrate. But what it did was buy us some time. And that is part of the reason that there is such a desperate push to deal with and address and strategize and formulate logistics surrounding the unhoused population that we currently are seeing. Because when January and February arrive, those evictions are going to roll quickly, and we are very, very nervous. An OIC's phone number is 937-323-6461.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Could we get that on our homepage, please?
That information is presently on our homepage.
Good.
And then information can also be received through our Utility Billing Division.
Great. Thank you so much. That's great.
It is. Thank you all.
Commissioners, we do have a couple add-on items tonight. The first one's a revision to Ordinance Number 220-20. This is a revised ordinance for the potential conversion for the former Downs Army Reserve Complex associated with being able to accept contributions. The next one is authorizing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient funding agreement with SBDC related to CARES Act ROF dollars. And then a couple emergency resolutions related to board appointments. The first one is reappointing Diana Schaefer to the Community Grant Advisory Board. And then the second one is consenting to the appointments of members to the community police advisory team, Jeanette Anderson, James Bacon, Lisa Dunn, Lisa Henry, Ramona Henry, Lauren Kelly, Ravi Khanna, Otis Williams, and Robert Young. And those are the add-ons for tonight.
So we're ready for the public hearings? Okay. Public hearing scheduled for 6:55 is called to order. The roll call from the previous meeting will cover this also. As a clerk, done proper legal notice of this hearing.
Notice of a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed change in zoning for 0.57 acres located at 120, 122, and 126 Bell Avenue from RS5 Low Density Single Family Residence District and CCQ Community Commercial District. The CI1 Intensive Commercial District was published in the Springfield News-Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached here too is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on October 19th, 2020.
I move that the communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minute, and filed.
Second.
The move in seconded. Call the roll.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
May I remind you? Thank you. In an effort to stop the spread of COVID-19 and allow public participation at city commission meetings, face coverings are required to be worn by guests at all times. Seating is available with designated spacing, and all guests must exit the building following the posted signs, which are to my right. Audience members wishing to speak on the agenda items or doing the public comment period may do so at the podium when the mayor asks for comments. Please give your name and address for the record. Commissioners and staff using microphones for the recordings are seated at least six feet from each other or between flexible glass barriers. Thank you for your compliance and participation.
Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Steve Thompson will provide that virtually.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Okay, so for this first case, it's three different parcels on North Bell Avenue. You'll see them outlined in yellow on the screen. They are between West North Street and West Columbia. For the surrounding land use and zoning, to the north is commercial and residential, Zone CI1 and RS5. To the east is residential, Zone CC2 and RS5. To the south is residential, Zone CC2. And to the west is manufacturing, Zone M1. And here is a look at the properties from Bell Avenue. They're currently undeveloped. For the background on this case, the applicant seeks approval to rezone the subject properties to CI1. The property owned by the applicant at 1035 West North Street is used for auto detailing. The applicant plans to expand the current business onto the subject parcels. For the analysis, the Connect Clark County Comprehensive Plan shows its future character area as traditional neighborhood, low intensity. Uses permitted in the CI1 district would be consistent with the surrounding uses. The thoroughfare plan shows North Bell Avenue is classified as a local street. Return reports from staff show no objections. The staff recommendation for this item is approval of the request to rezone the subject parcels to CI1. The city planning board unanimously recommended approval for this item. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, were there any objections to this?
No, there were no objections.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone in the audience want to speak to this matter? Your motion to adjourn the hearing.
I move.
Second.
Then move in seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
The public hearing scheduled for 6:55 is called to order. The purpose of this meeting is for a public hearing to consider a right-of-way vacation as proper legal notice been given of the hearing. The purpose of this meeting is for a public hearing to consider right-of-way vacation as proper legal notice been given of the hearing.
Notice was published in the Springfield News and Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city, advertising the city commission's consideration of the vacation of the first alley north of East High Street from Fostoria Avenue east to the intersecting north-south alley. Attached here too are true and correct copies of the notices of public hearing published on October nineteenth and twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
I move that the communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minutes, and filed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes. Staff report.
So this alley vacation is on South Fostoria Avenue, just north of East High Street. As you can see, the arrow is pointing to the alley on the screen. Uh, just to the west is Schaefer Middle School. Here's a closer look at the alley in question. The alley will remain open to the east from Willis Avenue. Then you can head north and exit that way. And here's a view of the alley from Fostoria Avenue. Return reports from utilities and staff show no objections. Planning and zoning comment is the applicant requesting to vacate this alley, constructed a garage in the right-of-way some time ago. A four-foot section of the alley was vacated in nineteen eighty-nine. Staff recommendation for this item is approval of the request to vacate the subject alley. The city planning board unanimously recommended approval for this item. And I can answer questions.
Is there any questions or comments?
Yes, uh, two questions. Were there any objections from the neighbors on this?
No, there were no objections.
And the next question is, was there a cross-access easement agreement required by the city?
Yes, that was one of the items we requested the petitioner and the neighbor to the north to enter into. And we did receive a signed copy of that to be recorded.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commission? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this matter? Your motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
The, uh, meeting of city commission is called to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Chilton?
Here.
Dr. Estram?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here.
Mr. Copeland?
Here.
Please rise for the invocation of the pledge of allegiance. Our God, we are concerned for our community. Um, right now, we're particularly concerned for our homeless citizens. And, uh, we need guidance trying to find solutions to, uh, their problem with winter coming. Help us to make good decisions for the people of Springfield. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands by nation of God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your motion to approve the minutes?
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Clerk will proceed with, uh, first readings by title only.
Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning zero point five seven acres at two twenty-three Montgomery Avenue, Springfield, Ohio, from R S five low-density, single-family residence district and C C two, community commercial district, C I one intensive commercial district, vacating the first alley north of East High Street from Fostoria Avenue east to the intersecting north-south alley. Amending ordinance number ninety-one ninety past March twelfth, nineteen ninety-one, and commonly known as the codified ordinance of the city of Springfield, Ohio, by the amendment of sections nine eleven point one six and nine fifteen point zero two thereof, relative to utility connection fees on unassessed property and repealing existing sections nine eleven point one six and nine fifteen point zero two. Authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept, if awarded, a fun year two thousand and twenty Ohio law enforcement body armor program grant in an amount up to seven thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars from the Ohio Attorney General's Office. And authorizing the city manager, finance director, law director, and chief of police to perform all acts and execute all documents they consider necessary to fulfill the city's obligations under said grant and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements. Authorizing the law director to approve and settle a claim with Brian S. McGee for the expense incurred as a result of damage that occurred on his property located at two sixty West Harding Road on or about August tenth, two thousand and twenty, and authorizing the director of finance to make payment for Brian S. McGee in the amount of eight hundred dollars as full settlement as for said damages. Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the subrecipient funding agreement with the Clark County Combined Health District to extend the period of performance to December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one. Authorizing the payment of up to seventy-four thousand dollars to the Board of County Commissioners of Clark County, Ohio, to obtain planning services from Clark County Springfield Transportation Coordinating Committee for the two thousand and twenty-one calendar year.
Uh, yes, uh, with ordinance two fourteen dash twenty, could you tell us, uh, in common language, what, what we're doing there in terms of this new language, please?
Commissioner, I'd be happy to. Um, every couple of years, we are required under the codified ordinances to, uh, review our connection fees and, uh, for the finance director to make a recommendation to the commission about, uh, what those connection fees should be. Uh, what you're doing here this evening is adjusting those. Uh, and the water one is going up just slightly from, proposed to go up slightly from two hundred dollars and ninety-three cents to two hundred and fifteen dollars. Whereas the sewer one, though, on the other hand, is proposing to come down at ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents to.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Yes. I would like our staff to talk about two seventeen dash twenty on what this entails with the Clark County Combined Health District.
Yes, Commissioner. So originally, we had worked with the Clark County Combined Health District to provide funding to assist with testing services related to COVID nineteen, uh, specifically utilizing a portion of entitlement dollars for low to moderate income individuals in their testing. Uh, originally, that agreement with Clark County Combined Health District was set up or established through the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty. Um, there is still money available. They did not utilize or maximize all of those dollars yet. And so this extends that agreement through the end of two thousand and twenty-one because obviously, testing services will continue to be a large part of, uh, the fight against COVID nineteen.
Thank you.
Confirming and approving a development incentive agreement, non-residential development, withholding Springfield Upper Valley LLC and I C T, Springfield Upper Valley LLC, provide for water and sewer services to real property outside the city limit.
Move to adopt.
Second. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was wondering if we could get some additional information about specifically, um, what we're doing here.
Uh, yes, I'm going to unmute Chris Moore and ask to start his video.
Yes, commissioners, this is, um, a change of ownership for a property at the corner of Baker Road and Upper Valley Pike. They are currently connected to sewer and water. And, uh, this, um, legislation would square away everything for the change of ownership and modernize the agreement that the old property owner had because it was, it was quite outdated.
Very good. Thank you.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland? Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number six to the agreement for professional engineering consulting services between the city and Strand Associates Incorporated in connection with Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan, extend the contract completion date to December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and to modify the hourly billing rate.
They'll move.
Second.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to submit an application for financial assistance and accept a grant from the State of Ohio, Ohio Public Works Commission to obtain funding in the amount of nine hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred nine dollars for the two thousand and twenty-one O P W C paving project and authorizing the city manager, law director, finance director, and city engineer to do all things they consider necessary for the submission of the application for financial assistance and the acceptance of the grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to submit an application for financial assistance and accept a grant from the State of Ohio, Ohio Public Works Commission to obtain funding in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty dollars for the C L A U S forty, C I D number one oh three, 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 two, and further identified as the Westbound Forty from Greymon Avenue to Limestone Street Project. And authorizing the city manager, law director, finance director, and city engineer to do all things they consider necessary for the submission of the application for financial assistance and the acceptance of the grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a ten-year contract for communication and dispatch services with the Board of Clark County Commissioners for an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty dollars for the initial contract.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, Mayor, I have, uh, a couple of comments on this this evening. Um, at the last meeting here, Dr. Estram made a comment that we had been trying to achieve this for quite some time. And he's correct, we were trying to achieve it for quite some time. And there was a deal on the table that we were not going to accept. It wasn't that we couldn't put it over the finish line. We didn't feel it was an equitable deal to put over the finish line. Not much different than the deal that's on the table tonight because all we really needed, in addition to the deal before, was the council of governments to be a part of it. We were going to the Downs Center. It was all ready to go. And they recanted. They decided they wanted to go to the Springview Center and that the city would have nothing, no part of it. The expenses were not going to, we were not going to have anything incurred. We were going to be a customer, not a partner. So again, the commission chose as a consensus not to put Springfield in that particular situation because even though we were in financial difficulty at that time and we may have saved, I think the number was two or three hundred thousand dollars a year at that time, we just decided we just couldn't afford that and we weren't going to put the people of Springfield through that. Tonight, we have a deal on the table that I made the comment last two weeks ago, and I mean it. I meant it then and I mean it now. This is as close as we have ever been to being able to enter into a deal with the county. But the city of Springfield still is going to be a customer, not a partner. There will be no council of government. There will be an advisory board that the sheriff can decide to go or go along with or not. And if they don't go, well, there can be an arbitrator. That's fine. I mean, we do that with our unions all the time. I, I just don't think it's the deal that we want to have right now with the county entering into a brand-new, um, dispatch center, the third of which that they have moved three times, that they wanted to go someplace else. Now they're going to the children's home, the former children's home location. And again, I don't have any problem with any of that. My problem is not, quote, having a real seat at the table when it comes to the way the dispatch center is going to be operated. I have no problem with Sheriff Burchett running it. I didn't have a problem with Gene Kelly running it. The problem is, we need a leg to stand on because we're elected to represent the citizens of Springfield, the police officers that we employ by charter, the fire division that we employ by charter. And that's pretty tough to do if you don't have a seat at the table and you can't get the dispatching the way it needs to happen. So again, I commend Dr. Estram and Commissioner Rue for their follow-up through this program. I know that they have pushed it very, very hard. And again, I only hope that if this is voted in favor tonight, that it works out for the citizens of Springfield, our police division, and our fire division, and most of all, our dispatchers. So again, I appreciate the time, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Estram?
Thank you. I want to make five points this evening as we consider this ordinance. Point one. The collective bargaining process worked. And I know there are those who don't support collective bargaining, but I'm not one of them. I'm a firm believer in collective bargaining. And in this particular case, collective bargaining solved the problem. And I want to commend everyone at the table who was involved in the collective bargaining process. Through that process, issues were resolved. Secondly, I want to commend the flexibility of Clark County and particularly Sheriff Deb Burchett. If it hadn't been for the flexibility of the county, we wouldn't be looking at this resolution, wouldn't be looking at this ordinance this evening. So I appreciate the hard work the county put in at the table and the flexibility they were willing to show. As a result of those two processes, we are bringing to you through the hard work of our staff, and I do want to commend city manager Brian Heck and everyone else involved in this on the city staff, an ordinance that's going to improve efficiency and improve effectiveness for the people of Clark County and Springfield. Year one, the projected savings is seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, close to three-quarters of a million dollars that because of COVID this year, this city needs in order to move forward with capital purchases like new fire engines and police cruisers because we haven't had the resources up to now to be able to afford to replace some of those badly needed items. And also, we're looking at, while not seven hundred and thirty-three thousand every year, likely at least a quarter of a million dollars every year that we can reallocate and use in our city. The needs are many, and we heard about the homeless need this evening. We're behind in some of our capital projects. And all you got to do is drive the streets of this city and know we've got a lot of work to do on the city streets. In terms of effectiveness, this particular contract contains application of services to national standard. It's not left to the sheriff or anyone else running this operation in terms of standards they must meet. They must meet set national standard, the highest in the land. That's what we're talking about. And we do have a way to enforce those standards. First, through the advisory committee. And secondly, by withholding payment. Thank you. I want to make five points this evening as we consider this ordinance. Point one, the collective bargaining process worked, and I know there are those who don't support collective bargaining, but I'm not one of them. I'm a firm believer in collective bargaining, and in this particular case, collective bargaining solved the problem, and I want to commend everyone at the table who was involved in the collective bargaining process. Through that process, issues were resolved. Secondly, I want to commend the flexibility of Clark County, and particularly Sheriff Deb Burchett. If it hadn't been for the flexibility of the county, we wouldn't be looking at this resolution, wouldn't be looking at this ordinance this evening. So, I appreciate the hard work the county put in at the table and the flexibility they were willing to show. As a result of those two processes, we are bringing to you, through the hard work of our staff, and I do want to commend city manager Brian Heck and everyone else involved in this on the city staff, an ordinance that's going to improve efficiency and improve effectiveness for the people of Clark County and Springfield. Year one, the projected savings is $733,000, close to three-quarters of a million dollars that, because of COVID this year, this city needs in order to move forward with capital purchases like new fire engines and police cruisers, because we haven't had the resources up to now to be able to afford to replace some of those badly needed items, and also, we're looking at, while not $733,000 every year, likely at least a quarter of a million dollars every year that we can reallocate and use in our city. The needs are many, and we heard about the homeless need this evening. We're behind in some of our capital projects, and all you got to do is drive the streets of this city and know we've got a lot of work to do on the city streets. In terms of effectiveness, this particular contract contains application of services to national standard. It's not left to the sheriff or anyone else running this operation in terms of standards they must meet. They must meet set national standard, the highest in the land. That's what we're talking about, and we do have a way to enforce those standards. First, through the advisory committee, and secondly, by withholding payment until it's arbitrated. We don't have to pay the bill if we're not receiving the services that we have contracted for. And lastly, this is point five. Point one was collective bargaining, point two was the flexibility of the county, point three was efficiency and effectiveness, point four, ability to enforce. Here's point five. I sat on the financial advisory committee several years ago, and we were asked, as a group of citizens of this community, what did the city need to do to show they were trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer's dollar, and one of the strong recommendations that came out of that study was, you need to be looking at combining government services where you can in order to save the taxpayers' money, and the first example given of that in a subsequent audit was the dispatch services. I am truly worried at this point in time that with our revenues down 1% from 2019 and 4% below our budget, that we're in trouble in 2020 and likely will remain in trouble in 2021. Now, I will be the first to acknowledge that we're fortunate compared to other cities who are facing losses of 25% in revenue. We're down only four. Thank heavens for that. But COVID is not going to be in a problem that's immediately solved, and neither is the economic effects of COVID. So, I think there's every likelihood, and I'm looking into my crystal ball, admittedly, it's a little foggy, but I'm looking into my crystal ball, and with revenue down this year and likely down next year, I don't know if we'll have much choice but to go back to the voters in two years and say, will you, in fact, extend the levy? Will you renew it so we can keep the city moving forward and keep it afloat financially? And what I don't want to hear from the citizens of this community is, you had a chance to save us three-quarters of a million dollars the first year and a quarter of a million dollars every other year, and you didn't take advantage of it. You didn't do it, even when that was the recommendation of your citizens advisory committee. You didn't take advantage of that opportunity. I think it will make it more difficult for us to pass that levy if what I'm suspecting comes true, and very frankly, all you have to do is listen to what has been said in the past by every one of us, and rightfully so, that this wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been for the generosity of our taxpayers. If they hadn't voted to extend that additional levy, we would be in deep trouble. All of that is absolutely true. We wouldn't be having our streets repaired, we wouldn't be having new vehicles for our fire, we wouldn't have been able to give our employees a raise that they desperately deserved and needed, and I'm worried that two years from now, we're going to face those very same issues, and I want to be able to say, as one commissioner on the city commission, that we kept our promises. We did what we said we were going to do. I will be supporting this issue. Thank you very much.
Other commissioners?
Yes. First of all, I want to say hats off to our dispatchers. From reading your emails and talking to you, I got a sense of what it's like to be a dispatcher, and I talked to our police chief, I talked to our fire chief, and I was assured that the new dispatch center will use best practices, and looking at the training, I know it is rough, but I'm looking at, there's a lot of training that needs to take place, and I want to say to our employees that, you know, you are valuable, but I don't want to live in a city, in a county, where I fear if I'm out in Pike Township, that I'm going to get the same service that I'm going to get in the city. I don't want to be out in Kattava and thinking, I need to get into the city of Springfield because I'm not trusting the county's dispatch service. So, I'm going to have to say that, with all that given, I'm going to ask our city manager to kind of talk about some of the things that we had asked for, and the county agreed to, on the shift differential and the pay.
Yes, Commissioner. So specifically, the MOU set up specific provisions related to base pay rate, seniority, vacation benefits, those types of things as a part of our employees, because first and foremost was the importance of our employees being a part of the new center. That was critical to the success, and I would probably say Sheriff Deb Burchett would say the same, that having our employees as a part of this in partnership coming over was going to lead to the success of this combined center, and I'm glad to say, and again, I commend the sheriff's administration and their bargaining unit for recognizing that, and in the fall, were able to reach an agreement that kept our dispatchers whole in terms of their seniority. It raised the wages of our dispatchers, kept our supervisors, who would become dispatchers in the new center, flat, offered the opportunity for them to apply for supervisor positions, which would have potentially raised their pay rate from what they are as supervisors now, so on and so forth. They were able to meet and exceed what we asked in terms of keeping our employees as a part of this, and so I commend the sheriff's administration and their bargaining unit for recognizing and stepping up to the plate through the collective bargaining process to keep our employees whole. And then, secondly, again, we talked a little bit about, you know, the operations advisory team that would have membership from city services, so from our police, our fire, our current dispatch coordinator with Paul Hicks, and then also with their team, and then representation from the county, because, again, they represent county agencies as well, townships, their fire, their police, and the villages and so forth, and so there's the operations advisory team that gets to have a part in the discussion of creating and establishing standard operating procedures and so forth, under the guidance of the Ohio Revised Code, which dictates and sets certain standards so that we can continue to receive money from the state for 911 purposes, and then also, we have the ability, again, to go through a dispute mechanism process, which would involve a city commissioner, a county commissioner, and a neutral third party from an adjoining combined center to be able to work through any operational issues that would be deemed to having life safety concerns for both our first responders as well as members of the public in Springfield.
So, the biggest thing is the unknown is what we're facing here, so I would like to hear from anybody else that has anything to say.
Well, that's certainly going to be allowed. Other commissioners?
Yeah.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mayor. I just am really grateful to be at this opportunity. I'm glad to have the deal that we have in front of us. I could preach Dave Estrop's five-point sermon again. Everything he said is what, many of the reasons I ran was to see if we can collaborate some efforts within the community, both in government agencies as well as private, move this community forward. I believe that 911 dispatch, as highlighted by the Financial Accountability Group that was put together, was very important. This was important to do. Like I said, I can say everything Dave said, but I really want to thank, there's some people that just really stepped up, that were, you know, very much in charge of this. Sheriff Burchett came up to the plate, and she had a lot of pressure, outside pressure, from her, you know, outside, other people in the community that were, you know, were asking her to step up, and she had decisions to make, and she did, and I really appreciate your effort in doing that. Major Chris Clark, you went to bat not only for your employees, but you went to bat for your future employees within the collective bargaining agencies, and I really appreciate that, and I feel like this is the best deal and the least painful, unless you just don't like the word "change," and I understand that for our staff members, but coming together, the only thing that is going to be difficult is change. Everything else is fairly seamless when I look at what you've done, and I want to thank you particularly for doing that. And then the many community leaders that just kept the pressure on, kept the conversation going. Commissioner Melanie Flaxwell kept the conversation going with our commissioners, and also want to thank Jenny Hutcherson, county administrator, and Brian particularly, to keep, you guys kept the conversation going throughout 2020. Is there anything, this was dead, this was alive, this was dead, this was alive, and you guys kept looking for an opportunity to see if this could happen. So, thank you to all that have made the effort to bring us to this point, to where I obviously will be voting for this, because I think this is best for the community, and I just want to say, there is not a person up here or that has been involved with this that wants any harm to come to any citizens, and that has kind of been thrown out there, like this would be dangerous to combine and things like that. Nobody wants harm for the community, and if any one of us thought that this would be harmful, we wouldn't even bring it to the plate. This is going to be a safer dispatch center in the long run, and I just thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
I guess I'm the last one of the commissioners. I want to say I share some of Commissioner O'Neal's concerns, but I am also of the opinion that the city manager has negotiated some responses to almost all of them, and as a result, I think this is workable. Quite honestly, my concern is that sheriffs change, and I don't know what that means in the future, if we get a sheriff somehow wants to change arrangements, so I know what it basically means is we'd have to withdraw at that point, but having said that, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this, and I appreciate all of the work that our city manager went in, tried to respond to the biggest concerns I had. Okay, are there people in the audience who want to speak to this matter? You have to go to a microphone, one end or the other.
I'm here.
By the way, we have a three-minute limit if possible. Okay.
Is it okay for me to speak from Zoom?
Your mic needs to be on, ma'am, I'm sorry. And Melanie, you may want to mute for a moment, we have somebody else speaking.
Okay.
You'll be next.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Angie Smith. I'm a coordinator at the city dispatch right now. I'd like to start with a quote from Brian Heck that was in the Springfield New Sun dated November 19, 2019. "Public safety and 911 dispatch are the most critical services that the public relies on us to provide. The safety and protection of our community are paramount to the decision to maintain individual operation. Merging our 911 systems with Clark County would have a negative impact on the city's dispatch personnel, who are vital to our success for the emergency operations. Remaining separate will also allow us to support each other as backup if there's a system failure in either center," end quote. Let me repeat that last line, though. Remaining separate will also be able to have us support each other as backup if there's a system failure in either center. Right now, in these trying times of COVID, that's essential. In the last week, the city has had four dispatchers test positive for COVID. In the spring, county's also had someone test positive. If we're all in the same room and this happens, if the worst happens, you will have no one at all to provide 911 services. And I don't know if you guys have read the contract with the county and their new employees or their dispatchers. I recommend them, I do, for bringing up their dispatchers raises for 12% to get close to what our wages are, yet they still fell short. They also agreed to the one seniority, however, they've taken away holidays, and insurance percentages will increase from 13% to 15%, that's going to offset the 1% guaranteed raise. How's that making us whole? Both the city and county has already signed contracts for a new CAD system from Spielman. The new system will have all the records interface. There's also options for CAD-to-CAD interface. That means that it doesn't matter who answers the call, whether it's a city or county, doesn't matter what jurisdictions it's for, they can send it, enter the call into the CAD, and send it to the appropriate center. There'd be no delay in dispatching, and the transfers would be minimal after the calls have already been made. I know several people have said this is the closest we've ever been with dispatching, but stated tonight, this isn't the correct way. Control should not be all under one jurisdiction, not even the cities. There needs to be a COG. Please, just go back to the table and keep negotiating. I know you want what is best for all the citizens. You've said it time and time again. Please make the tough decision by voting no on this. Do not sell your first responders and your citizen's safety to anyone else. Keep it in your power. Keep a COG. Go back. Please, go back and renegotiate. Thank you for your time.
Melanie, you can speak now.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for hearing this the second time this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. As you know, I'm Melanie Flaxwell, Clark County Commission President, and I just want to say thank you for staying at the table. It has not been easy. There have been times we've walked away and we thought, we're never going to get this done, and Mayor Copeland, you and city manager Heck and I sat down when we thought there wasn't a chance that we could start this conversation again, and Commissioner Rue, you've been there from the get-go, supporting this effort, and we really, we do appreciate that very much. Sheriff Burchett has been incredibly flexible. Major Clark has worked on all those technical details. This technical advisory board is really going to help make sure that everything is done exactly according to those national standards that Commissioner Estrop mentioned. The bottom line is that this is about serving the residents of Clark County, which includes the citizens of Springfield, and we want to make sure that everybody has a public safety system that they can count on and quick, efficient response that they can count on from county services, township services, city services, and this will be the best way that we can do that seamlessly. Every time that we came back to the table, that's what it was about. It came down to making sure that we were thinking about the citizens and how this was going to improve the safety for each and every one of us. You know, we serve the constituents the same as you do. Your constituents are our constituents. That doesn't necessarily mean some of our constituents are your constituents, but every single resident of the city of Springfield is at the heart of the decisions that we make, as well as every citizen of Clark County, and we will treat your employees the same as county employees. They're going to become a member of the county family, and we will treat them as our own and make sure that all of the things that they have come to expect in an employer in the government is held to a very high standard, and so that is our promise to you. This, yes, while it's a contract, and that's what the request is here to sign tonight, it's a partnership, and we will continue this as a partnership, just as we have in developing this contract. So, we thank you for your support, we thank you for your diligence, we thank you for staying at the table to continue this conversation, and we thank you for coming together with us to better serve the citizens of Clark County and the city of Springfield.
Thank you. Okay. Name and address for the record. Again, three minutes, please. Try to stay to that.
Good evening, Mayor Copeland, members of the city commission. My name's Ross McGregor, I'm the president-owner of Penaflex Incorporated, 4981 Gateway Boulevard, out in the prime Ohio corporate park. I'm here this evening to lend my support for moving forward with the combination of the 9/11 Dispatch Center between the city of Springfield and Clark County. This is an issue that has indeed been discussed for many, many years. And I have participated in some of those conversations. I would like to, first and foremost, also extend my gratitude to City Manager Brian Heck and County Administrator Jenny Hutchison, along with everyone else, Sheriff Burchett and Chris Clark, for maintaining, even when things look pretty dismal. You know, this made sense, but how did we get to here? We just had to keep pushing forward. And I'm fortunate that I could have been a part of some of those conversations to say that this makes sense for Clark County, it makes sense for the city of Springfield. And while, yes, yes, there is a financial aspect that is advantageous to the city, that should be considered, but really, that's secondary to the safety of the citizenry and the citizenry, not just of Clark County, of Springfield, but of Clark County as a whole. I believe the combination of the 9/11 Dispatch Center will offer state-of-the-art dispatch to all the citizens of Clark County. Now, it's change, that's what it is, it's change. It's the fear of the unknown. And while the negotiations and the conversations have gotten to this point, there still is unknown. And I think we all have been in places in our lives where, whether we're starting a new business, whether we're running for office, there's the unknown. You don't know what's going to happen, but you know that you need to move forward. And I believe that's where we are tonight. I wanted to come down, as I said, lend my support to moving forward with the combination of the dispatch services, and I appreciate the time to address the commission.
Okay, name and address for the record.
Sheriff Deborah Burchett, 120 North Fountain. I would just like to say to the city commissioners, Brian Heck, that I am very thankful that we have finally been able to come together on this. We at the Sheriff's Division are not here for any power struggle or any type of power. We are only here to support the citizens of this community and make it a much safer and better place. We are here to make sure that every police officer and every fireman goes home at night. Yes, no one likes change. Yes, you all will be in the same room together, but you will be one of us, you will be our family.
Please don't talk to the audience.
We will treat the citizens, the dispatchers, the same as we treat our dispatchers. We are so thankful that this has come this far. And Brian, I want to thank you for staying on top of it and staying with Chris until you could get this completed. And I would just like to say that we will definitely work with you. We don't want to work against you, we want to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Major Chris Clark, 120 North Fountain.
I was looking at him.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, I apologize. I'll be brief, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, again, say thanks. This has been a long road, I appreciate all the positive comments. I know there's still a lot of work to do. This is, to me, just the beginning. We have a long road ahead to make sure that everybody comes on board, whole and happy. That is my goal. I want to express my appreciation to Rob Rue. He's been kind of pushing me in the background. Dr. Estra, same to you, Brian Heck, Paul Hicks, Jenny. This has been a really learning experience for a lot of us. And I want to express my concern that, moving forward, I want everybody to be confident in what our goal is here. Our goal is to have a combined dispatch center that everybody in the city and county can be proud and happy of, happy with. My door is always open, I welcome issues. I'm not here to say that I have all the answers, but I think together, with the city and the county together, we can come up with the answers. And I would be amiss if I didn't thank one more group of people, two more groups of people, and that would be the county dispatchers and the city dispatchers. Both sides, they're really the ones that sacrificed the most here. Both sides had to give up a little bit of something to make this happen. And without their cooperation, both the city and the county dispatchers, we wouldn't be where we are tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Tom, could you put your mic, push the button there at the base? Thanks.
Sorry. Tom Loftus, 1960 Ottoman Park, Springfield. First of all, I will admit to you, I know nothing about running a dispatch center. But I did attend several meetings convened by the chamber and several other business groups several months ago, in which this issue was brought up for discussion. And I can tell you that it was a good discussion, there were people on all sides of the agenda. We reviewed the joint concept, or the concept of a joint dispatch. We talked about the benefits of it to the community and the citizens. We talked about the risks that each party faced in putting this together. After a couple of meetings and a lot of discussion, I can tell you that the alternatives were reviewed again, and we looked at how to minimize the risk. We looked how to protect the employees, both sides, and both parties. And we looked at how to create checks and balances. And subsequent to those meetings, and coming to the other meeting here a couple of weeks ago and looking at material, I believe you have addressed those issues as best we can going into an unknown situation. There will be changes, there will be bumps, but I am convinced that the attitude of both the city and the county is positive, and they want to make it work, and I know that they can. Like bargaining, this openness of everybody in it. So, after we went through all of that, it was our recommendation that, and I felt from recommendation myself, that strongly that you should support that and vote for the integration of the two organizations. And with that, thank you very much.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Harold Frost. I live at 3043 Armsgate Road, Springfield 03. And I'd like to bring up a point of interest, if I could. And that is the area I live in. Many times when 911 call is made, whoever receives that call on the other end tells the person on the phone making the call, you need to hang up and call Moorfield Township. Now, that's happened repetitiously. And our tax-based money for school goes to Northeastern School District, but we are in the city. And I know calls have been held up for over a half a minute before they'll recognize and send to city. And if it's a hard call, that's a long time. Please try to do something with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. If there's no one else here who wants to speak, I think the clerk has two things to read that we're sending in.
We received two statements today from those who are unable to attend due to COVID or COVID concerns. The first is from Steve Neely, President of Armaloy of Ohio, 1950 East Level Lane. "In January 2016, 21 local business folks were asked by then-city manager Jim Bowden-Miller to come together and meet. The purpose of the group and the meetings over about four months was to provide an outside view of the city of Springfield, how it was being run, opportunities for improvement, cost reductions, and revenue generation. This group, an independent body, met prior to the passage of the levy which helped stabilize the city's finances. The group met a number of times, asking many questions and looking at a variety of options for the city to pursue. In April 2016, the committee offered its findings to the city. Included in the final report were sections on benchmarking and performance study, revenue enhancement, expense reductions, operations and long-term potential solutions. Among the section on operations was a recommendation to look at potential shared service opportunities with the Clark County government. An area specifically and repeatedly mentioned by the group involved developing a combined dispatch center for the city and county. Not only would a combined center create cost savings, but would enhance the quality of the service. The city has the opportunity to see this potential enhanced service and cost savings to its fruition. I urge all to vote in favor of this initiative. One needs only look at the Clark County Combined Health District created over 20 years ago in a similar fashion to realize the success of such an endeavor. I have attached a copy of the final review and report." The second statement comes from Mike McDorman, President and CEO of the Chamber of Greater Springfield, 20 South Limestone Street. "In 2016, the city completed a performance audit in partnership with the Chamber. Six priorities were recommended for the city to pursue it as it moved forward. The number one priority on that list was to strongly pursue combining dispatch. The Chamber is very excited to support the city's action in achieving this goal. It has taken much time and effort to get to this place. We want to personally thank City Manager Brian Heck and County Administrator Jenny Hutchinson for their strong determination and hard work with many different groups of stakeholders that has helped us get to this moment. Thank you, city commissioners, for your strong consideration of this very important issue."
Anyone else want to speak to this matter? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mrs. Chilton?
I'm going to reluctantly vote for this for our county. And like I said before, I'm kind of like tired of a division between the county and the city. We all live in Clark County, and with best practice, and I know it's unknown for our dispatchers, but I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
No.
Dr. Estra?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Confirming purchases and the obtaining of services for the city and providing for payments therefore, and declaring it an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission, from the audience? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estra?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the sub-recipient funding agreement, Emergency Financial Hardship Assistance, CDBG 2020, with Neighborhood Housing Partnership of Greater Springfield Incorporated, provide additional emergency rent and utility assistance to residents of the city of Springfield in an amount not to exceed $250,000, for a total agreement amount not to exceed $350,000, and declaring it an emergency therein.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission, from the audience? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estra?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
The next item's title was amended after publication of the agenda, accepting contributions for the potential conversion of 11,000 square feet of the former Downs Army Reserve complex to a shelter for homeless services and declaring it an emergency therein.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission, the audience?
Yes, Otis Williams, 1627 Yorkshire Court. I have been working with the interface for a long time. Elena Bradley, when she came on as director, I was there, I've done a whole lot. What y'all are trying to do now, sometimes, you know, the helper needs help. The pandemic has put a lot of pressure on us trying to get people in homes and everything. I think this is what y'all did. Brian Shannon, he knows I've worked for there a lot with this kind of situation. Right now, a lot of people say homeless is people that don't want to work with drugs and stuff. Homeless is people that have jobs, some of them, they cannot make enough money to do what they want to do. Transition period we try to help them go through is very vital. And what you're trying to do now, we need these beds and the support of the city to help get this process, be good to your neighbor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Dr. Estra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Adopting a first substantial amendment to the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Action Plan of the city of Springfield, Ohio, as submitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to reflect CARES Act funding and COVID-related needs, authorizing the city manager, finance director, community development director, and law director to perform all acts and execute all documents necessary to implement such first substantial amendment to the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Action Plan of the city of Springfield, Ohio, and declaring it an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission, from the audience? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Dr. Estra?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept, if awarded, a local community grant through Walmart in an amount up to $5,000 to be used for the purchase of CPR equipment. Authorizing the city manager, law director, and director of finance to do all things necessary for the submission of the application and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements, and declaring it an emergency therein.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, what kind of CPR equipment?
Kelly, mute.
I'll ask Brian Miller to join us.
Hello, commissioners. This essentially would provide a CPR mannequin that measures the depth of compressions and the rate. Ongoing American Heart Association regulations require that we're able to monitor the quality of the CPR that's delivered. And this mannequin would assist us in reviewing the performance of CPR students as they learn how to provide that valuable service to this community.
Thank you. Do you think that that would be offered to the public at any time? CPR certification, that is.
Brian, could you hear the question?
I'm struggling to hear anybody.
She asked, Commissioner Chilton asked if that was available and open to the public.
As far as CPR training?
So, the Fire Division is an AHA-approved training center, and we enlist the help of about 40 instructors. And so, any one of those 40 instructors would have access to this mannequin, as well as all their students. So, it's going to be broadly available to pretty much anybody.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Dr. Estra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into LPA Agreement Number 35221, Amendment Number One, between the city and the Ohio Department of Transportation in connection with the CLA State Route 72 Project, PID Number 113792, provide clarity regarding the funding sources, and declaring it an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, questions and comments from the commission?
Yes, what area on State Route 72 are we talking about for this?
Yes, commissioners, this item pertains to State Route 72 or South Limestone Street from Luffel Lane to Lansdowne. This is part of a greater reconstruction project that was looked at in a planning study in partnership with TCC, the Chamber of Commerce, and the city of Springfield, done in 2017. We were able to receive Phase One funding, which is this section from Luffel to Lansdowne Avenue from the state of Ohio through their safety program. We have also applied for Phase Two funding, which is Lansdowne to Singer Street, which is just north of the former Kroger site, for similar reconstruction activity. It creates a buffer between the sidewalk for pedestrian safety, as well as provides safety measures throughout the corridor for our vehicular traffic and bicycle traffic as well. And so, this item and the following item allows us to move forward with the detailed design of that Phase One project.
So, this is for the design?
Yes.
Anybody else? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to execute consultant modification Number 329461 with LJB Incorporated to provide additional engineering design services for the CLA State Route 72 Project, PID Number 106287 and 113792, for an amount not to exceed $309,445 for a total amount not to exceed $571,838, and declaring it an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission, from the audience? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Granite Inliner LLC for the 2020 miscellaneous sewer lining project for an amount not to exceed $447,736.50, and declaring it an emergency therein.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions, comments, mission?
Uh, yes. Uh, uh, I think it's important for the public to understand that while this is a lot of money, sir, almost $450,000, this really is, by using this lining process, we're really saving some money because we don't have to dig up the streets and replace the sewers. We can repair them and, and prevent some problems down the line by using this process. So I, I think that's an important point. Have I captured it?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so. Chris, would you agree?
Yes, yes, absolutely. This is a, a great process. It saves us money and saves a lot of disruption to the public.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Confirming and approving change order number one to the contract between the city and Outdoor Enterprise LLC for the Center Street Streetscape Project, to increase the contract in an amount not to exceed $29,447.25 for a total amount not to exceed $217,942.65, and authorizing the city manager to execute said change order number one, and declaring it an emergency therein.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
Yes. We're talking about down by the new apartments, is that correct?
Uh, yes. This project, uh, was for the streetscape related to Center Street, Main Street, and Columbia, which surrounds the block where the new townhomes are being constructed currently.
Thank you. I have to get that straight. They're not apartments, they're townhomes. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing an additional payment of $7,400 to the Board of County Commissioners of Clark County, Ohio, to pay planning services from Clark County Springfield Transportation Coordinating Committee, TCC, for a total payment not to exceed $74,000 for the 2020 calendar year, and declaring it an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
I was wondering if you could tell us what the additional amount covers.
Uh, yes. So on an annual basis, we partner with TCC to be our planning agency as it relates to our transit program. So they provide, uh, planning services for transit. And with the, there were additional CARES dollars that came down for public transportation. Typically, we would have a in-kind match of the $7,400 dollars to meet our match requirement to $66,600. And with the CARES dollars, we're able to utilize those to cover that 10% match. So it equals 100% federal funding that is providing that planning service related to our transit in the community.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
The next three items were added to the agenda, authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient funding agreement with SBDC Incorporated, provide funds in an amount not to exceed $806,250 to further the development of small businesses in the city for the period of July 1, 2020, through October 27, 2022, and declaring it an emergency therein.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions, comments, mission?
Brian, could you, uh, talk to us about where the $800,000 is coming from?
Uh, yes. So as part of the CARES program, the federal government put additional dollars towards EDA, the Economic Development Administration. And those dollars were passed down through what's called a EDA revolving loan fund. These are additional dollars that we have been able to receive in our community. We partner with SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, to run our loan programs like our original or existing RLF program. So this item specifically allows SBDC, uh, to be the authorized party for the city of Springfield in administering this RLF program related to the CARES Act. What's great about this program is it actually opens up some additional flexibility on the RLF restrictions that we normally would see, so that we can hopefully get this money out in helping small businesses throughout our community.
Thank you.
So how do small businesses apply for, um, loans from the Small Business Development?
Uh, yes. So they would work directly with the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, Rob Alexander and Mac Young. Uh, they would work with them on what the project is and the eligibility under the various loan programs. They, they run multiple loan programs for us, and so they can work with a client to make sure what's the best fit for them and their business and what they're moving forward with as a project. And then they would submit an application through that process. It gets approved by the Small Business Development Center Board, uh, reviewed by staff, and then, uh, work, the city of Springfield works with EDA to get approval of that loan package, so.
So now with the COVID-19, and I know Small Business Development Center was at Clark State? Is it still located at Clark State?
Yes, they are in the Brinkman Center, uh, on the top floor, the Brinkman Center. And, uh, I know they, uh, go in, uh, for regular office hours, but they can certainly contact Rob Alexander or Mac Young. I don't have that number off the top of my head for the Small Business Development Center, but if you go on our website at springfieldohio.gov, uh, we do have a link out to the SBDC and the various loan programs that exist through the SBDC.
Thank you.
Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Reappointing Diana Guilford Schaefer to the Community Grant Advisory Board, and declaring it an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions, comments, mission? From the audience? Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Consenting to the appointment of members to the community police advisory team, Jeanette Anderson, James Bacon, Lisa Dunn, Lisa Henry, Ramona Henry, Lauren Kelly, Ravikana, Otis Williams, and Robert Young, and declaring it an emergency therein.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
Congratulations to the, uh, community police advisory team, those selected, and we hope to see great things from you.
Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Dr. Eastrout?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
That include, uh, conclude our agenda? Uh, I have an anoint, announcement to make. In response to the increased cases of COVID-19, the Springfield City Commission will meet virtually during the months of December and January at 2:00 PM on Tuesdays, beginning for the next regularly scheduled meeting on December 8. Meetings can be viewed via YouTube or Facebook live at 2:00 PM or via replay. Questions and comments for city commission may be directed to the city clerk at 937-324-7341. Additional information will be on the city's website. Does that include our agenda? Believe it does? Anybody want to adjourn? If I could ask my usual questions, Mayor. Oh, come on. Sorry about that. Uh, and I would also, particularly in this time that we're all living in right now, like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. These are very trying times for all of us, and we've recognized that. Brian, how are we doing with services in the South Side? And Mark, how are we doing financially?
Yeah, from a service standpoint, uh, our organization, much like the community, has seen a spike in, uh, COVID-related cases, uh, over the last few weeks. Um, you heard tonight about our dispatch center. Um, our police division is seeing the highest numbers in quarantine. We have 19 in quarantine currently. Um, and so at this point, it has not impacted, uh, the level of service provided, but we are approaching that, that limit where it does impact, uh, our ability, uh, to, to continue. Our personnel department was down to one at one point, uh, for a period of time. I'm glad to say that they've all recovered and are back. But we have seen a s- a spike in our own organization here over the last several weeks, uh, higher numbers than what we've seen the entirety of the pandemic. So something that we're continuing to keep close eyes on.